No one is, okay. Well, I'll go ahead and we'll give it like thirty seconds.
What music can I mention?
All right, the time is seven o'clock PM. Thank you all for joining us. We do have a forum. Could I have a roll call for attendance, please?
Uh, lots of present.
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 Uh, John Beck.
Present.
John Redd.
All right. So, uh, I'll have everyone review the agenda. Uh, we have a call, call to order. We've established our quorum. I would suggest one change for the agenda, uh, as we do not have a rep present at the moment for Ivy Rehab. Uh, I would like that item to be pressed as we're working through the agenda.
I'm moving through the agenda.
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay. Um, matters from the public, uh, we do not have any attendees from the public at the moment. Uh, so we will move to three B regarding the COA, uh, for six ninety Harrison Street, Scottsville Baptist Church. Uh, we have Tim Carr here to present to us. Would you like to join us, Tim? Or do you wanna?
I understand your question.
Okay, yeah.
There was existing place that there.
Okay.
Uh, probably five to ten years ago.
Okay.
Standing, uh, were removed and now we have been donated to the place that you're the evil.
Okay.
And they want to put it back. Then the sound more property, uh, we made it's all for you. Yeah. Turned company had said we came back to our fence, this closure around it.
Okay. Okay. So at this time, I'll open it up to members to ask questions, comments, concerns. I'd, I'd like that it was donated. That's very kind.
I'm not very, uh, picky on this, uh, as you've seen, I think it's just going where existing one was going. Uh, being that it's donated, I don't see. How much we can ask them to change the exterior of it. Maybe, uh, is there anything that stands out to you guys is?
The non-permanent structure. And the reason why I brought it forward was it's on in front of the annex, which if you're standing on Harrison, going slash line.
Yep.
And it's going to from the street. It's in half ago.
Okay.
It's a non-permanent structure.
It's non-permanent. The last one that was there was Cedar, I believe.
I honestly, I, I'm comfortable with this. I just would plan to see you whenever the fences coming around.
Yeah, I'm more picky about the fence than I am about.
Yeah, and I would imagine the fence would obscure, you know, probably the bottom part, so. Yeah, so, uh.
I, I motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right.
What, what, what are the stilts, the, the legs? What material are they?
Oh, oh, hold on, hold on. Wooden, wooden.
They're wooden, and how are they attached to the building itself?
Sorry, you're boring this out to the back there.
Uh huh.
So, uh, I'm not familiar, but I just, I would get standard and sharp.
It, yeah, they kind of look like bolts that run through, um, the.
It's up already?
No.
It's not.
Go on, Phil.
If children are gonna play on that, I'd kind of like to walk up to it myself when you're putting it off. Just to make, make sure that thing is gonna stay up, you know, kids are gonna play.
It sounds like he was already in touch with his insurance adjuster or insurance company as well, so I'm assuming they will.
I, I hope so.
And those windows don't go up, do they? Like they can't like open them and crawl out of them. Okay, they're fake.
Yes.
All right.
But the picture of why it'll be about a little bit dirt section once you have it clear.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
It's about the point originally.
Okay.
Most levels pop with the fire.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Right, you have any other questions, Mr. Barker?
I don't know.
Okay, um, so we have a, we have a motion as a second. Uh, can I get all in favor?
Uh, just as long as the fence comes in front of us.
Yeah, I think that'd be, uh.
Different CI.
Yeah, um, yeah.
All right, none in favor?
Okay.
Bye.
Bye. Uh, all right, so three O, uh, so with COA approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so moving right on ahead, uh, well, we're gonna skip four A just to kind of give them maybe a little more time to funnel in. Jack, would you like to join us at the table for five A?
Yes.
Is there not, we still don't have anybody that's joined, right?
Yeah, we checked.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no one.
No one's, okay.
Just. Um, so I believe I shared this link, you know, email with the guys. And Jack, can you give a little bit about it? The short and sweet is I took some of the comments you had last month. Um, and just, I'll speak with confidence. I think we have a survey that will work pretty good for us, pretty straightforward. Jack, with the direction that you guys provided. And I think something that's workable for you guys. Now, me finding through my email.
We're on recent to you.
Now, and then we made more action. Said yesterday.
Yeah.
They had a timeline for inventory last time.
Sorry?
We laid out a timeline for the inventory last time. I think it was.
Believe we start advertising around March and producing results in April. Yeah. Yeah, they, we used to do it December.
They picked a cool month to do it.
Yeah, um. And then they talked about like, okay, maybe we'll eventually change it over. And it's like, yeah, uh, it's a good time to change it. They're grooving. Sorry? Oh, uh, advertising around March to let people know that we're coming out and then, uh, April getting outside?
And maybe since Brad would be able to attend, maybe the format you guys.
Format yesterday. Oh, oh, uh, you said yesterday and I was like, wait, I don't, uh.
Yesterday for me is anything.
Oh, so Claire and I will be taking one half of the town and then you and Alex will take another and, uh, we've got a, uh, a side by side for you and Alex to go in, so make it a little easier on you getting around.
Okay.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm walking better and better.
Okay, um, so, yeah.
I'm taking the side by side.
Uh, with that being said, I'd update any of your insurance policies if he's driving.
I haven't driven with him yet.
That's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
All you do is write.
Yeah, so basically the process is, once we split, we'll have a certain amount of properties that we need to review.
Uh huh.
And the ARB's jurisdiction is anything you can see from a road, a publicly maintained road.
All right.
So any private driveways do are excluded.
All right.
Um, but basically we're looking for the structural integrity on, that we can visibly see.
Mm hmm.
Um, any kind, uh, one of good example downtown is some retaining walls.
Mm hmm.
While they're not part of the main structure, they are part of the ARB's review.
Okay.
Um, and then we write the properties from, uh, excellent, uh, good, fair, and poor.
Okay.
Are we gonna do town inventory on this too? Like parks and this building?
Uh, we do have, uh, a couple of parks on there. Uh, one of them is the retaining wall for Bruce Park. Um, and last year, I think it was upgraded from either fair to good or something like that, because one of the stones was fixed.
And, and besides structural integrity, what else are we looking for?
Uh, you're looking for, you know, any paint peeling, uh, missing siding.
Okay.
Uh, if you can see the roof from where you're standing, you know, if there's any structural.
Problem, okay.
Yeah, uh, you know, like shingles that have slid off or, yeah, um, it's mostly to do with the health of the buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, you know, general exterior.
Cause that tells me everything, the health of the buildings.
Awesome.
That's, that's good.
And, uh, there's one part that where at least myself is pretty picky on the envelope. So if you notice that there's broken windows, uh, you've got all clear hole in the building. That makes it immediately square or fall in the part of poor, because anything can get in, it's subject to erosion.
Any building actually just got a hole in it.
Yeah.
I think there's problem, yeah.
Exactly, uh, yeah, so that's one of those things that's automatic.
So basically, all you have to do with the survey, bottom says notes. And you get, all you have to do is take a picture of it, take it up to Forest Max.
Awesome.
And all you do, I will get a notification when it gets submitted. I'll send the, uh, it back to Javier with the, uh, spreadsheet. Then we make a map of layout of whole town with map, so maps of coordinates for you. Make sure you put Scotts, Virginia.
Right, yeah.
There's, so, well, there's about fifteen different Scottsville, United States, and it must be Scotts, Virginia, which is a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it must be, I said, please put Scotts, Virginia.
Thank you, for the writer.
No.
You can add notes to the bottom of it. Any like documentation you need, you can type that in.
Okay.
Paragraph max, so this be set forward straight.
With this, um, so in previous years, we've only pictured buildings that are having a significant issue. Um, do we wanna, should we continue that trend?
Yes, so.
Okay.
Jack, if you could make that option, your pictures is optional, so just.
All right.
And then that would work for the workflow.
Okay, so then we don't have to take a picture of every.
Yeah.
So to brand a point where I think you guys take your most, you guys are the most careful about inventory, especially for households, because you're reaching the point where you're starting to lose parts of Scottsville history.
Mm hmm.
So, um, it helps out enforcement on my side, um, following your inventory. So, what you do here makes it super clear for us to make sure we kind of take data. And it would check it by GPS, so we can send map, actually marks where your location is, what house, you know, put dot on the map.
Okay.
If we wanted to pick up icons, we can pick for, we can match the spreadsheet to any icon. There's a million icons to choose from.
Um, yeah, I think the big one would be having an, one, something specific for poor condition, because if, if we're having to label it as poor, we'll wanna, you know, follow up with property owners to make sure we can get it at, at least to a fair condition.
Anything in the handout or sending out that says we're gonna take pictures?
I don't think so.
Have you finished it already?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe you wanna say, hey, if you see people taking pictures, because I don't think people are gonna be nervous about walking by, but it's.
Right. Yeah.
Will be maybe documenting or something like that, yeah, it's a good point.
I can include that in, uh. I can blast it out. In, uh, in the letters we sent out. And then I think another important point, but you'll be going with Alex is that we have to do a footfall of right of ways.
Mm hmm, right.
So, I'll double check since, I'm, I think since last year we got a good estimate about where we should be staying, where we shouldn't.
Yeah.
Looking at this inventory, but it should be straightforward. When we come back, we'll say. Hey.
Yeah.
And you can just use same survey every year, same link, same everything.
Okay.
I'll close after this is over and reopen it when you gotta do it next year.
Awesome, okay.
In the past, it all by hand, so we're lucky we're getting a survey.
Yeah, or we don't have stacks of that, so I'd rather have some mail one printed out of all the notices.
So you wanna make it optional? Not required? Um, we might just, it's giving permission, so that's a little bit.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, uh, I will, uh, I'll first ask if you guys have any questions, comments, concerns in regard to five A with the inventory? Do you have, is there anything you may wanna know before?
We have buildings, if there are buildings that are in poor condition, where does that lead? I mean, uh, what?
So, the inventory is the prime, the, the first starting point of when we recognize an issue and we say, all right, this is something that is, um, you know, needs fixing. Then afterwards, we come back, we review, and then we have an architect who will review and make sure that that condition really justifies the poor condition.
Mm hmm.
Or, you know, if maybe I'm being a little too harsh, it deserves a fair.
Okay.
Um, from that point though, if you're still listed in the poor condition, we send out a notice to property owners saying, hey, you know.
Fix it.
Yeah, you're, this is what's going on with your property. We'd love to have a meeting with you. Um, then you've got some property owners that will just fix it without even meeting. Some that'll come, ignore you completely, uh, and then others, they'll come and sit down at the table and have questions.
And do we have any legal help?
We sure do. Um, we, we've tried in the last, you know, I've been with ARB for only a couple of years now, but we try not to, you know, bring down the hammer, because
Yeah, of course.
We as a ARB before my time, we're known to be a little, uh, rough around that, just, uh, maybe rough's a bad word, but
strict.
Strict, yeah, that's a great word.
So, we, we say please.
Right, we, we, we try our best to work with everyone and, uh, we don't wanna have to go, but we have the tools if required.
My understanding of that is it's easier to just say please, because the legal action that we do have
Right.
is expensive and not a process that is really beneficial for the town or for the homeowner, so.
Yeah, as my cousin.
For us as a, you know, what if kind of thing.
As my cousin who's a lawyer told me once, avoid lawyers at all.
I wish I got that advice earlier in life.
So retaining laws count? Do you?
Yeah.
Fences?
Yep, so fences are, fences are part of it, retaining walls, um, sidewalks don't really count, that's more of a, uh, V dot issue for the most part.
Sidewalks would be the responsibility of the town anyway, wouldn't it?
Uh, most of them are gonna be V dot.
Oh.
Um, some of them are the town. Um, you'll see where V out will go in and they'll make a mess and then replace them. Um, yeah, but then you have some sidewalks that are private. Yeah, uh, well, maybe they're not quite a sidewalk, but more of like a walk up to the house, yeah. Um, foundations, uh, cracks in the foundation, those kind of things, those are all okay, serious issues that we watch for. Um, there's a few properties that are visible from the road, but are, you kind of need a keen eye to see them from the road. Uh, we're gonna work to just remove those from our view, because you'll find that there's at the laundry mat, uh, right as you're coming into town, on the hill, there's a property and I might have a map. Um, not one that's convenient, huh? I don't think so. Yeah. Um, anyways, uh, oh, actually zoning might have a map. I think I'm gonna fight this, um. Oh, uh, if you can't see it very well from the road, move on for that property.
Okay.
And then just note that property not visible.
You're thinking of the property that's just in back of the laundry room?
Yeah, so on the very tip top of the hill.
Yeah.
It's listed as a property that we have oversight on. But you can only see like the tip of the roof.
I know.
Half, you know, a tiny little side.
I know.
Yeah, um, it, there's no reason for us to try to judge that kind of property when you can't really see anything.
Deal with like the, uh, the fact that Canal Basin Square, like a big, big building back in there. Uh, it's been under construction since I think we played soccer together.
Where?
Yes, uh, so we had a meeting or a, uh, uh, demonstration, uh, dem- demonstration, you, you know what I mean? Um, we, we gathered with him a while ago and he told us basically the process and what they're doing. Uh, it is very slow moving. Uh, you are absolutely right. Um, I don't foresee that being any, any finishing or resolution anytime soon, um.
Why I'm bringing it up is, I think that this might sound lackadaisical, but I think our standards are generally, if there's progress, forward motion. Yeah, no matter how slow it is, we're, we're gonna work with you a little bit more.
Mm hmm.
Rather than, you know, jump it down your throat.
And, and they use traditional methods, so, you know, rather than going and using screws and nails, they, they showed us here and how they're building where they're using the wood and peg method.
No kidding.
No, yeah, no kidding, they, yeah, they're, they, they're restoring it to the best of their ability with tools and methods.
Which property are we talking about?
So this is the old warehouse, um, back behind the doctor's office.
That's Mr. Neighbors.
Yeah, Mr. Neighbors, yeah, um, yeah, so he's been repairing it for a while, but he's using traditional methods to.
I know it, right. He also worked on, um, building on Valley Street that's now for sale.
Yes, yeah, um, yeah, so, and that's an excellent point is if, uh, we, we try, we do our best to work with whoever is here, we, yeah.
If he wants to use, as far as I'm concerned, if he wants to, you know, use mortise and denton and pegs.
Yeah.
Fine, that's fine.
Oh. Yeah. Um, so, do you have any more questions for five A? Um, so we'll go ahead and skip on over, uh, oh, there it is. Uh, we're gonna go back to our, uh, three A, which is gonna be the sign permit for one fifty Scottsville Center. Uh, Ivy Rehab, yeah, um, if you wanna take just a moment, it's gonna be in reference to the signs that all of their current tenants place above their buildings. Um, this one is gonna be a little less centered over, oh no, it's actually dead center over their space, that's perfect. Um, now.
Oh, it's next to the post office.
Yeah, it'll be right next to the post office and next to the bank. Um, are we?
Gotta watch those people there.
Yeah.
Um, there's two people to never trust, lawyers and bankers. Um, are we looking, will this be an illuminated sign? Um, I haven't, okay.
Believe on that second page, you'll see the raceway.
Yeah, channel LEDs, okay.
This will be illuminated?
It is, yeah, illuminated sign, yeah.
Cause you're aware, not.
Right, yeah, I, I imagine they'll probably set it on a timer or a, uh, uh, daylight sensor perhaps?
If they, uh, if they run this place the same way they do their others, I belong to one.
Mm hmm.
Um, they are open at night, so there's a reason to illuminate it.
Yeah.
They're open pretty late, too.
And most of the signs over there, I think, are illuminated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, my, this is a side note on this. I don't mind the illuminated signs up there, I think they've, you know, obviously, it's within our codes. What if, is it on us if half the sign goes out to enforce that?
Oh, I had that question this week too.
Um.
Yeah, cause there's like, or if some of it's out.
That's a big question.
Uh, they're usually pretty good about it up there from what I've noticed, but
Yeah.
like every couple of years, it's like.
These, I freaked once we go out.
I'll look at our code, because I don't.
Light out, so one of them I was.
Now, in Scottsville, there's always a difference between suggestion and enforcement issue.
Right.
Um, and sometimes we just provide a lot of suggestions for emergency.
And our inventory doesn't extend a third of it for.
Uh, no.
Inventory does not, but your sign, uh, sign code regulations is going to, so.
Reasons to be announced because it's the R and N. That whole chunk of that ball between the alley of James River, that's the same as the, the R and N. So, uh, you can give me a moment. Uh, the one thing that I have had discussion with them, uh, since we provide, I provided dimensions in this packet, um, their square footage actually exceeds their permitted square footage by three and one by two. So, uh, we see the.
Okay.
Uh, I talked to them this afternoon, pointing out, um, that, uh, their square footage on the sign exceeds by three feet.
Okay.
And asked if they would be willing to reduce that size so you stay within the standard. So, um, you'll see on this table, Brad, for example, uh, that are all kinds on contingent on this, uh, frontage of the building. So we're down along that third step, they were sharing that the foundation for that building is one of the pieces. Uh, that. This is similar to the last proper we did out there last month.
Yeah, I saw it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing I could suggest is, as we've done previously, if you're willing to, uh, approve contingents on some conditions, which can include, uh, we reviewing and getting a, uh, a, uh, a confirmation from the outland that that signs, which is now, I think, are square feet. Uh, we could kind of keep it, uh, progressing. But I want you to first consider any other, um, concerns about dimensions or how you're placing.
The only thing I'm thinking is are the other signs there all within, because I'm looking at the backside of this post office sign and kind of stretching the rest of it in my head. I would say that's probably over there, square footage, too.
I've got.
The only reason I bring that up is because if they're just standing, it'll look like, all right, a little bit, maybe that would be easier. But I don't know.
It's, I have to think there was, I'm not sure, when we were enforcing our sign permit historically, so for example, we have, uh, not accurate, just in conferences with our town.
Yeah.
Those guys essentially, quote unquote, grandfathered it. So for example, I can see this sign over there. The grandfathered in Lunkins sign, Lunkins is grandfathered in, not in regards to sign, but in regards to it's, uh.
Mental.
Uh, that too, but it's zoning is, uh, it should be zone, uh, commercial there, but, uh, for example, if you switch ownership, they're right on that for next year, so they adhere to their grand property. So, uh, that is the. That is the big question I've had, started digging in for hours.
When we're talking three square feet. It's hard to picture. That makes it a little easier to picture it.
Yeah, it's that, that, that.
The other trick is just to get dense that I agree have physical therapy because you have to consider the whole. Uh, area, even between texts.
Even without the spaces, yeah, or with the space, yeah.
I'll have that next month with a new stash.
Have they made the sign, you know? No, okay, then maybe just. If that's doable, with the sign manifest, like is there a standard size, it should be easier if they were.
Yeah, I don't, my personal thing is I'm not gonna beat you up over what's essentially a foot. That I have.
I think it ought to be in proportion to the other signs that are already there.
That's a good point, because if your square footage is a lot smaller, then your sign on above would be significantly smaller. So then it's like, yeah, um.
But then like the post office is kind of like way over here, even though their door is here, so.
If it is in proportion to what's already up there, it's going to fall pretty much within the, the. The requirements of the town.
Then, uh, is there any chance you can go over to the shopping center for me? Yeah, one sixty, one ten, yeah, it's all above.
Man, that's huge for those things right there.
Yeah, like H and R block, I mean, that's a massive sign for their.
For places closed most.
Nice.
Yeah, we will, uh.
That's my G right there, look to the right, look to the right. Old hat, rolling downhill.
Going to H and R Walk.
It's August of twenty thirty?
Yeah.
So.
My, my question about Scottsville is when and how we're enforcing over the years. Uh, and I think this leads to this, uh. You know, romantically, that leads to your store, that's your also, that's why we have our hair.
It's all different and yeah, and you have different personalities that, yeah, I have to. My, my opinion for this would be, uh, approval on the. Conditionary grounds that it. Is not, it blends with the other signs, so it's not a. Egregiously different size. I, I think if we're, you know. That's kind of the sucky thing about that square footage is. You, you can make them have a really tiny sign in comparison to your neighbor that's silent.
If we could get a better markup. We could tell for Judge Black. Right, it's kind of hard to tell with, with just three letters.
Of the office, yeah.
They're not moving in, they're not planning to move into March eleventh, so that gives some tongue.
Yeah, if, if we were, if we wanted to, depending on what we wanted to have. If they're moving in the eleventh, our next ARB meeting is seven. And they have all their ducks in the row. They didn't, the following day, uh, we see that happen for the side.
I move to approve it.
Okay, uh, do I have a second? Do I have a, uh, good, all in favor? Or do you wanna go discussion and then all?
And I'm just blanket approve it, if you wanna add. I don't know that it's.
I, I'm not adding anything because I don't make, I can't make motions, uh, so that the inappropriate as chair.
If you would like, if anyone would like to add amendments onto that. Motion, I can find that, I, I think if this is accurate.
Yeah, I think if it's gonna look like that, I think it looks nice and centered, I think it's not. Tall, not too wide. I'll be able to read it, uh.
Then I will amend my own move, motive. Um, I move that we approve this contingent upon our review.
All right, all in favor? Uh, that leaves none opposed, so see how he passes. All right, we have given everyone the opportunity to join our meeting and, uh, uh, before I, you know. Starts spouting off, is there, happened to be anybody in there, uh, with us? Nobody has joined, so if I can get a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? All right, let's get on out of here. Yeehaw.
Have a good night.
Y'all too, thank you for a nice, sweet, quick meet.
Thank you.
Love it.
Therapy place to go.
I, I liked, I liked your idea, Brad, where they, they could have done like.